I would like to call tonight's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order. Really quick tech check. I know that Councilmember Dibala will be joining us virtually. Maybe, possibly. Okay, we don't have her just yet. She is, there's a time difference where she is. So I'm gonna go ahead and have the clerk please call the roll. And if we could just keep an eye out for Councilmember Dibala to join via Zoom.
Mayor Searcy?
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher?
Present.
Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Gibson?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens?
Present.
Councilmember Hansak?
Present.
Councilmember Small.
Chilling, never illing, place to be.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone who's a mom had a fantastic Mother's Day. It was a beautiful weekend. So I'm gonna run really quickly through tonight's agenda as well as a number of upcoming agendas. Tonight, we will have a voting session on the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 tax rates. The council will vote to convene as a stormwater management board. And then we will have a second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 stormwater management budget. A second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 budget. As well as a resolution establishing policy objectives associated with the fiscal year 2024 budget. As well as a single reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a contract for the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project. Lastly, we will have a voting session on a single reading ordinance approving grant awards. After that, we will have a work session on the 2023 legislative wrap-up and discussion of the 2024 legislative priorities. We will also have procurement of the rental housing licensing software. And I want to apologize to my colleagues. I got our days mixed up. On Wednesday, May the 24th, our next meeting, we will have a for the record, the National Gun Violence Awareness Proclamation. That will happen on June the 2nd. I want to encourage my colleagues to please wear orange. The voting session, single reading ordinance authorizing a contract for rental housing licensing software will be our voting session for the 24th. We will also have a presentation from the Montgomery County Planning Office on the Minor Master Plan. And then that will be followed by a discussion, a council discussion regarding the Minor Master Plan. On Monday, May the 29th, that is Memorial Day. And as such, on that Wednesday, May the 31st, the council will not meet. On Wednesday, June the 7th, the council will have its regular meeting. We will have a voting session commenting on the Minor Master Plan. And we are also tentatively slated to have a quarterly financial report that will cover January through March. As well as the American Rescue Plan, ARPA budget. And then that takes us to April the 14th. I'm sorry, June the 14th, where we will have a work session on legislative action requests for MML. As well as there's a number of procurements related to the recreation bus, trash truck, the Domer Avenue sidewalk contract, Tacoma branch stream restoration contract, as well as the purchase of two police vehicles. We will also have need-to-make board and committee appointments. And if folks would just bear with me one second. Perfect. Just making sure. And do we have Councilmember Dibala yet? Okay. No worries. Okay, so with that, let's move on to public comments on voting items. Do we have any public comments on voting items tonight?
Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. Tonight's budget ordinance mentions the budget attached hereto and by reference made a part hereof. There's similar language in the stormwater budget ordinance. My council member has informed me that the budget in the form to be attached is not yet available. I've also failed to find the stormwater budget in the form to be attached. I hope that to avoid problems with the county, the council will approve tax rate ordinances tonight, the tax rate ordinance tonight. I also hope the council will defer the second readings of the budget and stormwater budget until there are actually budgets to read. This will give us the chance to check that reconciliation has been accurately reflected, reported errors have been corrected, and that no new errors have been introduced. I'm confident that city staff can finalize the budgets before the start of the budget year. Failing to, failing deferral of second readings, I hope the council can attach the proposed budget, the proposed stormwater budget and the reconciliation list, changing the references in the ordinances. And doing so will accurately reflect what it is that the council is approving. I note that this may save some work for city staff since it will make preparation of approved versions of the budgets optional rather than required. The budget policy resolution before you tonight has a section on adding revenue with a list of possibilities to investigate. There is no section on cutting spending and no list of possibilities. In the short term, the city can only address its budget woes by increasing the property tax or cutting spending. Failing to work on spending cuts will lock the city into a tax spiral. I hope a section on spending cuts will be added to the resolution with a level of detail similar to that for revenue additions. Oh, I have a little moment. I can wish everybody Happy Norwegian Constitution Day with the name like Olson. So Happy Sittendei Mai to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next set of comments.
Your neighbor, Tom Gankliardo, lives near the middle school. I don't speak Norwegian, so I'll do this in English. First of all, I want to recognize Councilmember Hansak. And I want to endorse the comments that you made a few weeks ago regarding trusting each other. I agree with you. We have to trust each other more. But trust is not something that you can simply hope for or declare. It has to be worked for. It has to be earned. And how do you do that? Through openness, candor, acknowledging the worth of each other's concerns and contributions. That's all part of earning each other's trust. So this brings me to the next point. I understand that Eric Bond has been named the new editor of the Tacoma Park Newsletter. That's a good choice. He has experience, considerable experience, including having been the editor of the Tacoma Voice, which was a community newspaper some years back. He's an excellent reporter and he's an excellent editor. Will Mr., so congratulations to him. Will Mr. Bond, or any other editor for that matter, have the authority and independence to forthrightly and candidly report on the budget process which you are about to finalize? Will he? Will the newsletter report the fact that there was robust discussion about curtailing, curbing unnecessary and unjustifiable spending? And that some proposals did not receive the required four votes to make them real? Or will there be nothing more than self-congratulatory statements about reducing the rate, the tax rate, below the original proposed rate? And the fact that the general fund is in balance? Of course, it's in balance. You took things out of the reserves and you used ARPA funds. We're still calling for more expenditures than the general, than general revenues realized. That has to change. That's not just my opinion. That's what your consultant told you. That's what other staff members have told you. During the Soviet, in the Soviet Union, there were two main media outlets. Investia Izvestia, which means truth, I'm sorry, which means news, and Pravda, which means truth. And the joke was, there's no truth in the news and there's no news in the truth. We're better than that. You know that. I know that. So I hope and trust that Eric, with your encouragement and oversight, will make sure that the Tacoma Newsletter, the Tacoma Park Newsletter, will contain both the truth and the news. Not only about the budget, but of all the activities of the city. I want to associate myself with the remarks made by the previous speaker, Arthur David Olson. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on voting items?
Good evening. Paul Hubner, Ward 3. Councilmember Dibala's proposed resolution establishing policy objectives associated with the FY 24 budget is a good first step. However, numerous important and required matters are not set out in a proposed resolution and must be included to help ensure that the city's finances can start moving in a more fair and equitable direction. First, the proposed resolution provides no meaningful avenue for community input. There is a lack of any provision for the city and council to have open and transparent communication with city residents about a proposed budget. The community has no way of knowing what the mayor and council specific are discussing, and the community has no opportunity for meaningful input. More specifically, for example, the proposed resolution provides, quote, "The city council will review revenues, expenditures, reserves, and economic projections throughout the fiscal year, and the city manager will present council with a quarterly fiscal report on the expenditures and revenues," end quote. Nothing in the proposed resolution assures residents that they will have the opportunity to see or comment on the quarterly fiscal report on expenditures and revenues as is customarily done in other jurisdictions, including our own county council. Second, the proposed resolution says nothing about starting the budget process earlier in the year. Many other Maryland municipalities start their budget process much earlier than our city does. The city of Tacoma Park is clearly the outlier here, being this type of outliers antithetical to this community's values. Third, the proposed resolution focuses more on revenue enhancement than it does on reducing expenditures. The city has first and foremost a spending problem, a problem that must be fully acknowledged in the proposed resolution. Fourth, the proposed resolution makes no mention of the interactive budget software that the council should make public in order for the community to come to a better understanding of the budget impact of city spending and revenue increases or declines. Fifth, the proposed resolution does not address the metrics of how to determine appropriate staffing levels in the city. Or how to address city employees who jobs are funded with ARPA revenues that will soon cease to exist. Sixth, the proposed resolution makes no mention of staffing software to track city employees' time on task. Seventh, the proposed resolution makes no mention of the city's increasingly expensive reliance on outside contractors for both legal and other work. And lastly, the proposed resolution makes no mention of city staff being directed to produce a budget under different assumptions, such as maintenance of effort, revenue neutrality, constant yield, and/or targeted spending cuts. Thanks for your time and attention.
Thank you. Do we have any other general, I'm sorry, voting items, comments on voting items?
I'm glad Councilmember Dibala is here. My name is Jacqueline Moore and I live in Ward 2. My comments tonight are in reference to the resolution Councilmember Dibala introduced on May 10th. I support her request for the preparation and distribution of quarterly financial reports. And I just heard the mayor mention that a quarterly financial report was coming due, so that makes me want to do a little happy dance. I have a difficult, I've had a difficult time believing that these reports would be an onerous endeavor, given that this had been common practice in the recent past. At the very least, financial reports need to be created on a semi-annual basis with the goal of returning to quarterly reports within two years. But again, Mayor, if what you said was earlier this evening is true, then my happy dance will happen as soon as this meeting is over. If the city is truly committed to beginning the budget process earlier, such reports will make it easier for staff, mayor, and council members to make wise and responsible decisions. The closer we can get to real-time data about costs and expenditures, the better. I would also like to see these financial reports, whether they be semi-annual or quarterly, posted on the city's website within three business days of their distribution to the mayor and council. This, in addition to the use of an interactive made-for-public-use budget program, will give residents a better idea of how money is being spent. They will then be able to make more cogent and useful comments during the development of future budgets and the setting of tax rates. In addition, I did a bit of quick research on some of our other Maryland towns and cities' defined population data types of chief financial officer, proposed FY 2024 budget amounts, and budget process start times. Please note that four of the seven municipalities on this list that I'm gonna hand off to you begin their budget process as early as October and November. I hope this information will be useful to you.
Do we have any other public comments on voting items? Do we have any comments on general items, general public comments? And I do see that we've been joined by Councilmember Dibala.
I'm Susan Tribe, Ward 1. For months now, residents have expressed legitimate and serious concerns about plans for development by, plans by WAMADA and EYA for a development at the metro site, which includes a massive building five and a half times larger than the Tacoma Business Center, the office building in the middle of town, and eliminates commuter and other long-term parking, among other things. We've asked again and again for you, our elected leaders, to engage in the process on our behalf. A working group of concerned residents meeting at Historic Tacoma appreciated the chance to meet individually with Mayor Searcy and council members, Albert 2, to review the project and talk through issues such as compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, on the Maryland side, traffic parking, environmental considerations, and greater affordable housing. Many residents have reached out, spoken at council meetings, contacted the mayor and their respective council members, urging our leaders to get involved. It was pointed out to me today that two days ago, a document was posted on the city website, a memorandum from Mr. Fowler, the Acting Director for Housing and Community Development, addressed to the mayor and council and CC'd to Mr. Eubanks and department heads, which was apparently drafted on April 26th, which describes the proposed development in glowing terms with no reference to any need for the City of Tacoma Park to weigh in during the review process now underway. Is our city staff completely uninformed or simply unconcerned about issues raised by residents? More important is the mayor and council's silence with regard to the staff memo. Just another indication that our city government is declining to engage around a massive project that if built as designed, will have a very significant impact on our community and not for the better. This is not about being against the development. It's about working to make it a win-win, not just for the developers, but for our community. We don't have to give the developer everything it wants. It's not too late. For instance, the city should be applying now for party status so that it can participate as a full partner in the DC Zoning Commission meeting on June 15th, which is really going to be critical in terms of approving the height of the proposed development, the proposed building. But time is a-wasting. We never see this on the council agenda. It really is time. And deeply disappointing that it doesn't seem as though anything has been initiated so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments?
Good evening. Robert Anderson, Ward 3, as if you didn't know by now. Have a slideshow. The vehicle information is from the chart, which is found at the following address. That's for folks at home. You folks know where it is. Next. Next. Thanks. Nope, I'm sorry, back one. Police vehicles. Couple of weeks ago, the council looked at some vehicles and there were police vehicles and there was a question about the number of vehicles. And the chief said there were about 10 that were out of use, not good anymore. My question is, are these the vehicles that are out of use? Says deadlined in the line, so I'm questioning whether that's it. Why does Tacoma Park have vehicles in its inventory that are not in use? If it's for parts, is that a good reason for having 12 vehicles? Wouldn't ordering parts as needed for current vehicles be more cost-effective? And if this is not the reason, why do we have 10 deadlined vehicles in the city? And where are these vehicles being stored and at what cost? Next, please. Rec department vans. I've talked ad nauseam, I believe it is, on the rec department vans. First one, a van with 13,995 miles was scheduled for replacement in fiscal year '22. It's now put off for another year from this year coming up. We've got 14,000 miles on a van that's, let's say has 10 years of use, if we take out the three years of COVID. That's 1,400 miles per year. Do we really need a van for that? Why don't we rent one? 1,400 miles a year in use. How many more miles are anticipated before it's replaced? Did we really just put it off a year? The large van was reported to have an unfixable wheelchair lift due to the age of the lift. Could council ask what the issue is with the lift? The manufacturer and model number of the lift and the anticipated cost of repair. Could another lift by the same manufacturer replace it? Could it just sit right in? And at what cost? These are questions that need to be asked. Next. Next. As councils noted, there appear to be significant concerns with the vehicle replacement policy and perhaps a replacement fund. As you move forward addressing these issues, it's critical to ask the right questions so that both staff and residents are well-served. Next. It's been said that the vehicle replacement costs come from dedicated fund, so they do not impact the tax rate. While that may be true in a given year, the funds have to be replenished from someplace. Don't replenishment funds come from taxes? So it would appear that the fund expenditures do impact the tax rates. Or am I incorrect on this? I want to thank you all for your hard work. This is incredible. I can keep track of this stuff. You guys keep track of everything. I appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments? I'm gonna check with the city clerk. Do we have any virtual commenters? Okay, perfect. All right, so with that, we are going to move on to council comments. Do we have any city council comments? Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to say a couple of things about the parts, at least that I heard. I apologize for the travails of unwinding from whatever I did yesterday. I agree. I agree. And I agree. I think, I, I just wanted to thank the people who said kind things to us about our commitment to trying to wrestle some of these things down. And I wanted again to say that I appreciate Randy, or Councilmember Gibson, for being courageous enough to vote his conscience on the budget. I think, again, what I would say about some of these things is, again, related to previous experiences. And with regard to the deadline vehicles, like usually with the, the police cars, you have to keep them anyway for at least for a period of time because it's got a lot of stuff on it that you can't really sell. And so it takes a while to undo them, and then you got to do all the other stuff and consider what you're going to do with it when it's got holes in it and whatnot. So there is that, that I do know from previous experience. With regard to the, the budget ordinance motion, I agree with Arthur, and I will at least be moving to table it. I don't know if anybody's going to vote for it, but I will. Because I'm a lawyer, and the stuff that you write has to line up with the stuff that you do, in my opinion. I think the last thing that I would say about any of these things is we do have Crosswords Food Festival coming up. We also have a lot of activities coming up around the town. And I just wanted to make sure that people who are centrally located in wherever their space is are encouraged to go to all of the other spaces. And that's pretty much it. I just want, Ellen, thank you to all of the people who came in week by week with real substantive issues that we could look at and address, and hopefully did some of that effort in real time. The last thing that I would just say is, I don't, I don't know if we will ever formally discuss the building at the metro. I know we've done some work on it as a council. I know that the membership of the council has been conscientious of representing the views of their constituents. I will say, however, though, that from my previous experience and otherwise, I am in no way against verticality. You can only do five or six stories by nature, otherwise you got to use different building materials. And if you do otherwise, you're really asking people to give up rents that you're not going to give back to them in any way. So personally, I get it. But if we talk about it, there is going to be at least a counter position up here. So I did want to make sure that people knew that. Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, um, with, with regard to events going on, Councilmember Small mentioned the Second Annual Crossroads, Crossroads Community Food Fair, which is happening this Sunday, 10 to 3, Laurel Avenue, The Streetery. That should be fun. That same day in the afternoon, or from 8 to 3, Tacoma Park Elementary School, PTA, and the Food Forest Group, which I've been associated with over the years, will be having a work party at, at the school from 8 to 3 PM. Now, I wanted, gosh, I appreciate the comments tonight, which I do take to heart, have taken to heart, and I had some language ahead of time, which, what you're, what you've provided fits into. Thanking all of the public commenters we've heard over the last month that, and I applaud you for being sort of the cutting edge of public engagement, for sharing your voices and those of your neighbors. My sense is that most of us are too busy with families and making a living to dig into our city's budget issues. That's most of us. Up until recently, that was me. I got the tax bill, I checked my bank balance, and fortunately, I was able to pay my taxes. I wasn't thinking that I had a choice, or that I had a real vote in the process. Since coming up here, I have learned and seen and heard loudly that residents do have a voice, and it does affect our decisions. I especially want to thank Ward Three residents for your voices and engagement. We're now at the end of this year's rather difficult budget process for the reasons discussed by several of you out there. But I will take those lessons forward to the next budget. Thank you again for all those people that have made, really, very intelligent, poignant points about our budget process, its impact, and the other issues. And I'd just say the metro, I'm, you know, not an expert. I do think that there is some height issues that, that worry nearby residents and parking as well. We haven't, as a council, agreed on something, nor is it perhaps our role. But as an individual council member, I do support our active engagement in, in the, in the, in the process with WAMADA to have our voices heard. Thank you.
Councilmember Hanzak? Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to everybody who came out to speak tonight, and also who has written to me in the interim. Just a couple of points. I'm not going to be able to get to everybody's comments tonight. Maybe others will get to them in writing. I am very excited about Eric Bond being our new editor. I also just recently learned that fact. I was incredibly impressed by him during the debate season, and I think, I think it's, it's a great choice. It's nice that we have somebody like that to choose from in the pool. And I look forward to, to seeing how the newspaper is edited. And, and regarding, just because I, I did focus myself on vehicle purchases during the budget season, I appreciate all the thought and the effort that has gone into looking at our vehicles oh-so carefully. And I don't know if, if you were here the evening, we, we, I, I spoke particularly about having sat down for about an hour and a half with the staff and asked a lot of those questions that you've just put forward to about the vehicle lift. And I think it's just a longer conversation in which the devil is in the details. But I think, you know, it's something that we'll have to continue to talk about over the course of this year as we come out of the pandemic and see how those vehicles might get used differently and how things might change based on current calculations. I think things may, may be changing and pivoting a little bit. And then I just wanted to, because we have a consent agenda tonight, I wanted to quickly touch on an issue that is close to my heart because it's important to my residents on, on different fronts. It's about the Maple Connectivity Project. And I'm just going to make a brief comment about it because I do plan to consent tonight. But I, I wanted to say I just really appreciate the staff engaging with me on some of my concerns about equity. I am most excited about the potential for the Maple Connectivity Project, providing greater access and a, and a better balance for both pedestrians, pedestrians' cars, as well as bicycles coming down Maple from Ward Five towards the metro area and our commercial center. At the same time, I am deeply concerned about equity issues and whether we've perhaps given ourselves enough time in a year and a half to be able to move from the 30% plans to the next stage. But I am, I am very much reassured by staff that they welcome my continued engagement in this process on behalf of, of my residents, as well as others across the city who are worried about these issues. And I am very pleased that they have put so much effort into ensuring that community engagement is central to the bidding process that they put forward because I, I just really want to make sure that we have done our due diligence on maybe laying out a plan, and we can discuss it as council, on whether many of our, our residents, particularly along Maple Avenue, have bike access in every, in every meaning of that word. Do they have bike cages in the buildings? Have they even been given opportunities to learn to ride a bicycle, even though there are rental bikes on the street? And all the other different issues that go into that. I think that is a separate process. It deserves separate attention and something that we should really put our minds around as residents in a city. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. Councilmember Fulton?
Thank you. I just want to remind people that the Grant Avenue Flea was changed this Saturday because of rain last Saturday. And so that'll be on Grant Avenue between Hancock and Carroll from 10 to 4 on May 20th. And at the same time-ish, from 11 to 3, Market on the Street will be happening on Laurel Avenue. And I also want to encourage especially parents of high schoolers and middle schoolers to be paying attention to the development going on at Montgomery College and Tacoma Park because some of us will want to have a nice campus to send our children to. There is a facilities master plan walking tour on the 25th at 5:30 PM, which I will be at. And I just want to take a second to thank everybody who is here and who was here during the, during the budget process. But I also want to thank people that reached out to me on the playground, or in person, walking around, or who sent me an email who's not able to come here. And it is hard to take a balanced view and hear those people who aren't able to show up in person because, just because we hear an opinion as a majority in these meetings doesn't mean that that's the majority of what we're hearing from all of our constituents. And it is difficult to balance that as a council member. So I hope that people that aren't able to come to these meetings still feel heard.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you. I apologize again for being a couple of minutes late. I'm at a National League of Cities meeting, and we ran over. I just wanted to, for those of you who are in the room and online before you disperse, you may not be around when we get to the resolution conversation. I just wanted to, to say that I don't intend it to be a comprehensive look at everything we need to do on budget. Yes, there are other things to do. This is focused on a couple of pieces that we can tackle first, make some progress on, build up some momentum, if you will. And so I just wanted to make that clear for people. And, and thank you to Jackie for looking at some of the municipalities. I looked at, apparently, a different set, but we can compare notes about what their budget processes look like. But again, that was not the focus of this particular effort. Thanks.
All right. Well, again, one of the joys of going last is there's sometimes a little less to say. First, I want to thank everyone that has come out and provided your, your feedback and your thoughts regarding the budget process. I, I want to stress, this has been a very challenging budget for us. Not just as it pertains to the timeframe, but in terms of the staff transition, dealing with a new council, as well as, you know, really wanting and striving to have feedback, as much feedback as we can get from, from everyone, as, as many people as we can. So I think that that has been one of the major takeaways, is that we, we had to cram a lot into a short amount of time. And I agree. I think it is important for us to start the budgeting process earlier. I think what's really important is for us to be able to start some of these conversations with residents as it pertains to priorities that, that we have as a community. When I first came on council, everyone told me, they said, "You know, the city of Tacoma Park, we like to punch way above our weight class." Well, you know, sometimes that costs money. And we have to decide on whether or not, you know, there are certain things that we do that is above of what a city of our size can and should feasibly do with our budget. And we may have to decide on whether or not those are some things that we maybe want to forego. But that means that it's pivotal for us to engage the entire community as it pertains to that decision-making, not just those that are able to show up on a Wednesday night during peak, I know for parents, during peak bedtime, bath time, dinnertime, homework time. So I, I, again, I can't stress enough my appreciation for the residents that have reached out and those that have engaged, because I do think that this is really important as we develop a more robust process in the future. In terms of the, the point about the final budget availability, we're dealing with a little bit of a chicken and egg issue in that our staff needs us to vote and settle on a budget in order for them to do what they need to do in order to finalize said budget. At any point in time, just simply because of just bureaucracy in the city, if we don't pass the tax rate, if we don't say that what we agreed to is what we, what we are finalizing, then staff can't technically finalize the book itself. So that's why there is a little bit of a disconnect between what is the final, final budget and what is still what is considered proposed on our website. It's because our staff need us to vote and finalize saying, "Yes, we agree to this tax rate, and yes, we agree to this budget", in order for them to finalize the book. So I do just want to make sure that that point is, is clear. Because otherwise, if we don't vote on it, then staff can't determine on their own, unilaterally, what the tax rate should be, or what the council has approved in terms of the contents of the budget. While I, I, I hear the comments that have been made, ideally, we would have, and again, this goes to timing, right? Ideally, we would have enough time where we voted, and things are settled, and then we would have it all before, you know, the necessary deadlines. But unfortunately, in this case, we're, we're not able to operate in that way. So with that, I want to add to the growing list of fun stuff that's happening this weekend. I know I've gone over a little bit. So tomorrow, I have on my calendar a Maryland Municipally Chap, Montgomery County Chapter meeting for 6:30 tomorrow. And I will also be visiting the Purple School on Friday morning at 8:30, so I'm excited about that. I will also be at Tacoma Flea. I will also be at the NAACP Freedom Fund Gala, so I'm excited about that on Sunday. And just as a quick reminder, the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority has its annual membership meeting, and that is on Wednesday at 10:00. So I will be calling into that meeting as well. So with that, I will turn things over to our Acting Deputy City Manager, Mr. Eubanks, for any city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, council and members of the public. I have just a few event updates. Many of them were already mentioned, so I won't repeat. But tomorrow on May 18th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at the Langley Park Community Center, is the New Hampshire Avenue Flash Bus Rapid Transit Community Advisory Committee. They will be reviewing alternative designs and providing updates on the evaluation process. The link for this information will be posted in the city manager's comments tomorrow. Also on May 18th, from 7:30 PM to 9:00 PM here in the auditorium, four local poets will share their original work in a new Tacoma Park Arts poetry reading. And then finally, on May 19th, from 7:30 AM to 9:00 AM, Tacoma Park is hosting two pit stops for Bike to Work Day. These will be at the New Hampshire and Sligo Creek Parkway, and at Old Town at 7035 Curl Avenue. If you aren't, if your bike route isn't on this route, you don't have to miss out. Please see www.biketworkmetrodc.org to find pit stops on your route. There were some questions about the WAU property tax status. And we have an update for council from Housing and Community Development. Staff are currently working with the State Department of Assessment and Taxation to remove the tax exemptions for the site of the former Washington and Venice Hospital, beginning July 1st, 2023. If the property owners cannot provide a satisfactory description of charitable activity at the site, then exemptions will be removed. However, the property owners will be able to appeal the decision to the Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board. So we will provide that information to you as we get it. And then a couple of updates from recreation. Summer camp is quickly approaching. There's still availability, availability in the New Ave Adventure Camp, and this is at 7315 New Hampshire Avenue for the entire summer. Limited spaces remain in the dance camp, theater camp, and teen camp at the community center. Registration is on the city's website at tacoma park md.gov/recreation. Voting is going on now for the Recreation Department's June outdoor movie. Please vote for your favorite movie, choice by February 26th, on the city's Facebook page. And I want to note, too, that registration is ongoing for the Recreation Department's adult- Adult Basketball League and Middle School and High School Summer Basketball Yes Leagues. T-Ball is full for ages five through eight. Summer Youth Employment Program is also going very well. We currently have 18 participants, and we're in the process of connecting them with hosts. And finally, as we mentioned last meeting, that we're attempting to make the budget process as transparent as we possibly can, and so we will periodically be doing what we'll call Budget Bytes. And so just for context, as the mayor alluded to, one of the things that is going to be important for staff as a follow-up to this meeting is sharing the finalized tax rate with the county, which is due tomorrow at 9:30. So once council approves the tax rate, we'll be able to officially and formally share that with the county. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
All right, so with that, adoption of the minutes. So I just want to check with the city clerk. I have notes?
Yeah, so the minutes, I believe Jesse emailed them out. I don't know if everyone had a chance to review them. I put copies in the mailbox, so if you have any comments or changes, just email them to me and we'll take care of that.
Okay, so we can vote on the adoption of these minutes during the next meeting?
If you would prefer, yes.
I would prefer that, if folks haven't had an opportunity to review.
I'm sorry, point of order. I was just wondering, and I'm sorry, I don't know the protocol, if it's possible for me to ask a question of our city manager about one of his comments?
Sure.
Is that?
Yes, nope.
I'm sorry, I should've.
No, 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 no need to apologize.
Jumped in a little quicker there. I just want to say, I'm super excited to hear about the response about the tax status of the WAU, WAH site. Is it at all possible to ask for the removed tax exemption to be retroactive to the day that it went out of use on April 1st, since we weren't given much notice? And if, I feel almost certain you may not have the answer to that, but I just want to put that out there.
We can.
Thank you.
We will find out and report back to council.
Okay. And so just in terms of the adoption of the minutes, the council has received minutes for January the 25th, February the 1st, as well as February the 8th. Is that correct? Okay. And so if everyone can take a look and provide any comments or questions to the city clerk, that would be great, and we will vote on the adoption of the minutes during our next council meeting.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just want to ask, what is the norm in terms of minutes? I'll tell you, I mean, some of the, in terms of when we would receive the minutes to, maybe something's happened, it seems like a long delay, but.
Yes, we are behind, and we're working as quickly as we can to get the minutes to you. Typically, we try to send it along with your packet, your agenda packet, if we can, so that you have time to review. But just like I said, unfortunately, we're just running behind, but we are working to catch up.
Sure. Is there, what is the goal, I guess, in terms of how much time beyond today would minutes likely be, or I should not say likely, would you hope or work toward there being available? I'm just.
In a perfect world, we would like to have them by the next meeting.
Okay.
So.
That's what you're working toward? Okay, I appreciate it. I just wanted to know what the goal was.
Yes, that is our goal.
It's the goal, and it's a significant challenge, because we're also covering committee meetings that also have minutes and several other meetings that also have minutes. In this particular season, because we have the back-to-back meetings from the budget process, we're a little more backed up than usual.
Sure, understood.
So, yeah, so it is on our minds to get that out as quickly as possible, and we're working towards it.
So for next week, you may receive actually a couple of more minutes to approve in addition to these.
Yeah. Okay. Nope, that's great. And I also just want to also remind my colleagues that we've been having a number of weeks where we've had multiple council meetings within the week, just during onboarding as well as during budget. So just ask for everyone's patience as we are climbing our way out of all of this stuff. All right, so with that, I am going to move on to our voting session. The first item is the Second Reading Ordinance adopting the FY 2024 tax rates. Just want to do a quick check to make sure that there were no changes to the ordinance since the first reading. All right, don't believe so? All right. And so just in terms of vote, do we need a roll call on this? All right. So would someone like to move the Second Reading Ordinance adopting the FY 2024 tax rate?
So moved.
All right, Councilmember Hanzak moved. Councilmember Siemens seconded. Would the clerk please call?
Point of order, just for posterity and whatnot, can we have the motion read that establishes the tax rate, so people will know what it is?
I am working virtually.
That's fine, I don't need to be a pill about it. It's just, I like the protocol things.
Thanks, I just pulled it up. All right. All right, so we are, this is the Second Reading Ordinance establishing the tax rates for fiscal year, fiscal year 2024, beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Searcy?
Aye.
Councilmember Fulcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
I would just like to make another point of order, that it, it's my understanding that it had to say what the number was in the drafting. It's cool if it doesn't, I just want it in there, and I think I would abstain because of that, just protocol-wise. It's cool, though. I mean, like, I'm in favor, but I just, it's, would say.
So would you like to abstain, or would you like for us to call the roll again?
Maybe modify.
Yeah. All right, so we're offering a, well, it's not an amendment to the resolution, it's an amendment to the vote.
No, I don't think, I don't think you can do that, so I'll just abstain. It's not a big deal. I'll abstain. But it's not because I'm not in favor, per se.
Right. All right, so let's move on to the next vote. So just want to make sure that the city clerk captured everything? Okay, perfect. All right, so the next item, so we are going to convene a vote to convene as the Stormwater Management Board. Would someone like to move for the council to convene as the Stormwater Management Board? All right, Councilmember Small moves. Councilmember Siemens, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gibson second. We are now these, all those in favor of convening as the Stormwater Management Board? Please say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstain? Thank you, author. We are now the Stormwater Management Board. All right, so now we're going to move on to the Second Reading Ordinance adopting the FY 2024 Stormwater Management Budget. Would someone like to move the following ordinance? The City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, ordinance number 2023-7, an ordinance approving and adopting a stormwater management budget for fiscal year 2024, beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024. Do I have a second? All right, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Searcy?
Aye.
Councilmember Fulcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
All right, so we are going to move on to the Second Reading Ordinance adopting the FY 24 budget. So would someone like to move the following? The City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, ordinance number 2023-8, an ordinance adopting, approving and adopting the budget for fiscal year 2024, beginning July 1, 2023, and ending.
I'd like to just go ahead and make that motion to table, given the fact that the actual ordinance is not consistent with the, having the document, again, because of the procedural aspects of it and my own personal lawyerliness. So that's a superseding motion, so I just wanted to go ahead and make it.
Okay, would anyone like to second the motion?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor of tabling the vote to finalize the budget?
Can we ask a question?
Sure.
We have a discussion, short discussion. By tabling it, will that, would that not disrupt our process for tomorrow morning declaration? Or is it just because it's the budget and not the tax rate, it doesn't cause an issue?
It's, my understanding is because it's the budget and not the tax rate, that it wouldn't cause an issue with the, but if that's not the case, I'm sure Mr. Yubanks can correct me.
I believe that's correct.
Are there any other implications that I am not aware of if we table this and wait?
The process has typically been, as the mayor stated earlier, that city staff wait until we have an approved budget by council before we proceed. I believe in theory, we could proceed with the assumption that the budget that we develop will be approved. If it isn't, there will be no opportunity for us to correct it at a later date.
And just want to ask, so there are aspects of this budget that do not impact the tax rate. And by not voting on the budget, that means that those aspects of the budget have not been finalized. Is that correct? So those items have not been approved for staff to act upon until the final budget has been approved. So for example, aspects regarding the equipment replacement reserve, which did not impact the tax rate.
They can't do anything about that until June 30th, anyway. When's the fiscal year end?
June 30th.
June 30th.
So they can't act on a budget that is not in existence.
And how long, my understanding is it typically takes time for staff to finalize the book. So how long would we potentially have to wait until we have a budget where we can actually vote to say that it is okay for staff to proceed with planning for the execution of the budget?
I could only reference last year, but the budget book was under development after the fiscal year began last year. And I think that's happened in years past.
I would, I would accept, just as a friendly aspect of my motion, since I'm not going to withdraw it, that if we had just the hard numbers of the budget without the narrative at the time of ratification, I personally would be comfortable with that.
And the hard numbers are in the ordinance itself. There are also some attachments to the ordinance, the fund summary, the reconciliation, and then the capital improvement program. I don't know if that's adequate.
I don't know where the packets are for today. I didn't get a hard packet, so I don't. But with regard to the way that this resolution is written, based on my review online, my argument would be that if the absolute narrative aspects of the budget are not prepared, but the hard numbers can be officially attached herein and thereto, then that would be better officially as an ordinance than otherwise. Like, my argument would be that, you know, if you've got to develop a narrative or put the gloss on it for a long, and it's going to take a while to do that, that's okay in theory. But with regard to the actual drafting and ratification of the budget, I'm not trying to be difficult about it, I just feel like that there's, it's just a little loose, and it could be less loose. And so we don't have to table it, like, you guys can vote against it, but I'm not going to remove it.
Okay, so councilmember, councilmember, sorry, I'm looking at the numbers. Councilmember Dibala? Councilmember Dibala?
Thank you. I want to see if I, if I've got this right. So the whereas's on this clause don't mention the reconciliation, but the process is there was the numbers in the budget as amended by the reconciliation list. So can we say that? Because then, as you, as the city, acting city manager just pointed out, the budget tables, the summary tables, and the reconciliation list are attached to this resolution, ordinance, excuse me. And so if we, my question is if we were to put that in, whereas the budget that's adopted is the budget that, as proposed and as corrected by the attached reconciliation table, or words to that effect. I could write something down quickly if this concept works for all of you, so that we are referring to the numbers that we have approved, rather than leaving it just sort of, well, part of the budget is done and part of it isn't.
I just, I would probably withdraw if the language there was acceptable. I would just say that.
So if I, if we were to add a whereas that explains that, that would work for you?
Yes.
At what point would I propose an amendment to the ordinance? I guess we need to have it.
Basically, I think I'd have to withdraw first. But because I trust you, Cindy, I will withdraw my motion to the table.
Okay. All right, so just want to apologize. We're just quickly looking at potential whereas. Councilmember Dibala? So, Councilmember monitor, let's see. Yeah, she's writing.
It would be in the, after the seventh, I think it would be a new seventh.
Yep.
Where it's the, whereas after considering the recommended annual budget, et cetera, we would say the council has adopted the following, the attached reconciliation items on May, when was it, 10th, 8th, May 8th, 2023, to amend the proposed budget. How's that?
That, that would be fine with me.
Should I say that again? Did somebody write it down?
Yes, I need it, I need it again.
And I'd also like to say thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome. Whereas, so this goes after the, after considering a recommended budget amendment, annual budget, et cetera, and the comments, and the public hearings, and the priorities, then we say, the city council has amended the proposed budget through the reconciliation table attached, adopted on, and I believe it was Monday, May 8th. Somebody tell me if that's the right date. Oh, good, somebody else has the date. That would be sweet. Whereas. The, okay, so have you, have you got it, or do I need to say it?
Okay. Just want to make sure that this is, that I have it. So this would fall under, after the resolution, after the
Either under or after, yeah, either part of it.
Six, seven. Yes, so it would be after seven. So after considering the recommended annual budget submitted by the city manager on April 12th, and the comments made by the aforementioned public hearings, the city council has determined the city council has determined its priorities relative, okay, relative to the delivery of municipal services for fiscal year, and whereas the city council has amended the proposed budget via the resolution, the reconciliation.
Reconciliation table, attached, attached, and ad- attached reconciliation table, as adopted.
Herein and here too, in there, just for language sake, if you want. Attached herein and here too.
You don't have to.
Sure.
So just to repeat, so after the whereas, um, the seventh whereas, whereas the city council has amended the proposed budget via the reconcili- reconciliation table attached. And then it would be, and whereas, the council and city manager will work closely throughout the coming year to monitor revenues and expenditures to ensure the short and long-term fiscal health of the city and appropriate use of ARPA funds.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so let me.
Thank you, Cindy, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, and I'm just going to, folks will bear with me quickly. Um, we will send this language to the city clerk, um, so you'll make sure you have that. Okay, so I think, I think we have it. So the motion has been withdrawn. Um, there was a, uh, a friendly amendment to add a whereas clause. I want to make sure that everyone can vote on said whereas. Council member Dibala?
I'm not sure if the was formally introduced.
Yep, that's what, that's where we're going.
Yeah.
Yep.
I appreciate your nimbleness with the procedure too.
No worries. Um, so we're going to vote on the, um, the addition of the whereas clause. So council member, uh, uh, council member Small has, um, offered a friendly amendment, which is the addition of a whereas clause. Um, so just so that everyone will know, the introduction is, um, council member Small has moved the following, um, language. Whereas this, uh, after the seventh whereas clause, whereas the city council has amended the proposed budget via the reconciliation table, uh, table attached, um, and then the document will proceed. Um, does someone want to second that friendly amendment? Council member Dibala has seconded. Okay, all those in favor of that friendly amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any oppose? Any of saying? Okay.
Thank you. I'd just like to appreciate your nimbleness with the rules.
Yep, no worries. Thank you, council member Dibala, for your right and prowess.
The ordinance been adopt, uh, been?
Not yet, we're about to.
Okay, thank you.
Move the, the ordinance as amended. All right, so let me just get back to my proper version.
So moved.
Excellent. All right, um, do we have a second to the, uh, reading ordinance of the council member Siemens? All right, so now we can do the roll call.
Can I make comment? Can I make comment?
Yes.
Yes, I just, uh, want to repeat, um, what I said last week, um, with, with notwithstanding all the hard work that, that staff and council has done. Um, I'm going to not, vote to not accept this budget, um, due to the time, time and information constraints. We didn't have a, a real option, in my opinion, to seek, uh, more than reductions at the, at the margins, uh, to, to basically delay many things. The absence of performance metrics and alternative budget scenario are, I think, glaring omissions. Um, I'll be working with this council to do better this coming year. Thank you.
All right, so I would like to ask for the clerk to please call the, the roll for this vote.
Mayor C R C?
Aye.
Council member Fulcher?
Yes.
Council member Dibala?
Yes.
Council member Gibson?
Nay.
Council member Siemens?
Aye.
Council member Hanzak?
Yes.
Council member Small?
Aye.
Okay, so the next voting item is the resolution establishing policy objectives associated with the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. And just so that everyone knows, this is a, um, this is a resolution, not an ordinance. Um, and so would someone like to move, uh, council resolution, um, to be na- to be numbered, establishing policy objectives associated with the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget? Um, council member Dibala moves, do we have a second?
Can I request a reading, please? Of the motion? Can somebody read it?
It was, we don't have a number yet.
Oh, no, I, I just meant the text, like the, like since, it's okay.
Oh, the te- the text for the entire.
Yeah.
It's a full-page thing here.
Yeah. It's, it's no big deal, it's okay if we don't.
Okay. Um.
Point of border question, um, are, are we allowed to, uh, is now the appropriate moment to offer an amendment?
As soon as I have a second.
Oh, I thought you had a second, I'm sorry.
A second?
Second.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, so council member, council member Dibala moved, council member Small second. Um, so now can we, council member Dibala? Council, council member Dibala?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, too many buttons to push. Um, I want to call everyone's attention to the fact that, um, the version that we have just, uh, proposed, just introduced, has some amendments from last week. So I, I'm not there, so I can't see if people have paper copies of the new version, but it is online. I want to make sure everybody's looking at the same version. Um, and I understand, um, before council member, um, Hansak has suggested amendments, that the mayor has a number of, of, of clarifying amendments to put forward, um, which are, in my mind, all friendly. So I don't know procedurally how you want to do this. I, I don't know if, does anybody besides me have the, the mayor's amendments, or do you need to read them?
I don't, I don't believe so, but I'm happy to read them.
Thank you, Mayor.
No worries.
Yeah, because I think.
I knew I was going to have to read it, that's why I didn't want to read it twice.
Just trying to get everybody on the same words.
No worries. Okay, so, uh, just to, to help everyone, and I will go through, um, just generally my amendments. Uh, so the main amendment, um, is about, uh, moving the complete list of all city fees, um, and whether they can reasonably be increased, moving that concept up to when we're talking about the quarterly, um, fiscal reports. So just to kind of read through this, um, no worries, I'll, I'll, I'm reading it now. So, uh, whereas, I'm going to read the whole thing, whereas the city council has adopted ordinance twenty twenty-three eight, approving and adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget for F, for July one, twenty twenty-three, June thirty, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the city is recovering from the fiscal and other impacts of COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas the city council has received reports and presentations in the past few months on ten financial, on ten-year financial forecasts and the city's fiscal health and an organizational assessment. And whereas the city council and city management team desire to work closely throughout the months before the next budget season to develop and consider policy options and additional revenue sources related to long-term fiscal health for the city. And whereas the city council has identified establishing a long-term fiscal sustainability strategy for the city as a priority goal in the council's twenty twenty-three dash four council priorities. And whereas, as part of the city council's review of the proposed FY twenty twenty-four budget, discussion of twenty twenty-three dash four priorities, specific policy and revenue options have been identified and may have the potential to improve the city's long-term fiscal health. And this is where we get into my edits. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council will review revenues, expenditures, and reserves, and reserves and economic projections throughout the fiscal year. Additionally, the city manager alongside the finance director will present council with quarterly fiscal reports on expenditures and revenues. The second quarterly fiscal report shall include a summary of city fees, revenues to date associated with each fee, and staff recommendations regarding fee modifications. And be it further resolved that the city council will work with the city manager and designated staff within the next eight months to conduct an initial review of city policy concerning the replacement of ci- city vehicles, equipment, and facility repairs relative, relative to municipal best practices. Okay, um, and then specifically, I didn't change this stuff, specifically the criteria for vehicle replacement policy, the criteria for road maintenance policy, and the assumptions behind the equipment replacement reserve that affect how frequently equipment is replaced, and policy options for a facility maintenance reserve policy. And be it further resolved that the city council will work with the city manager and designated staff in the next eight months to consider the feasibility and potential additional revenue sources. And this is, I've added some clarifying, including the timelines needed to meet county requirements, specifically increased stormwater fee, railroad and utility tax increase, and vacant property tax, and a, and a longer-term approach to considering the appropriate, uh, commercial tax rate and or changes to the non-inventory components of the commercial property tax.
Oh, I think you have to call in there.
Yes. But council member Siemens, do you?
Has this been moved yet? I'd like to discuss it.
Yes, it's been moved, it's, it's a discuss. Yeah.
All right, um, I appreciate all the work that my colleagues have put into this, uh, uh, resolution. And I especially would like to call out, uh, council member Dibala and council member Gibson. And, um, and I know everybody else has worked on it some, but, um, as this has evolved, I, um, I'm concerned that we're trying to, um, build a nice tight little box to do something that maybe we haven't spent enough time, uh, really discussing what should be in, in our review process. And I think the idea in general is very good, uh, but I think, um, there are some aspects of this, like, uh, uh, we've got a lot of new council members, you know, four new council members, uh, this year on the budget, and this is one of the first things that they were thrown into. Uh, so I think, you know, we haven't talked about the educational need and, and been clear about what we'd like to see in that. And, and I think that with that and the experience that we have now, um, you know, following this budget, that people will be better versed in, uh, what the different aspects are and, and what the limitations are. Um, and, and so I'm not opposed to the, uh, the concept. Uh, I think that, um, you know, the coun- it is something the council should be working on, but when we put in hard deadlines, we heard tonight, uh, from Mr. Hudner in the council comments, uh, you know, some things that he felt should be in here that sound, uh, reasonable. Um, I just, I'm concerned that this resolution is, uh, is too limiting in some, in some ways, and, and, uh, and it may be a more general, uh, resolution to commit to, uh, reviewing the budget process and, and reviewing things, um, would be a better way to go about it. And then, uh, we can debate what those things are as we go along and not have to adhere to something that we, that we swear to tonight. Uh, and then we find out, uh, you know, next week that, uh, you know, maybe we didn't put the, all the right things in here. So I'm just, uh, suggesting that, uh, uh, if, uh, again, you know, as we did last week, uh, you know, I had something that I thought should be included in this, and, and I asked the mayor for a commitment that, uh, that we'd work on that, uh, on a future agenda. I would advocate that that, uh, type of commitment from the mayor, that it will be on the agenda to discuss these things. Uh, we don't have to be so specific about what we're asking, uh, you know, planning to talk about at that time. So, uh, I'm, uh, moving to table this, uh, based on a commitment from the, uh, from the mayor that, uh, that she would include ongoing time and, and some future agendas to actually, uh, take a look at our whole budget process and what would be a better, uh, way for us to do it, and a better way for, uh, us to interact with the community.
I'll second the motion to table so we can discuss.
Thank you.
All right, um, council member Siemens has moved to table this discussion, council member Small is the second, has, um, has opened for discussion.
Thank you. Um, I, I just, I'd like to say, I, I appreciate, um, what, uh, council member Siemens has said about this. Um, I will, I will be voting a- against any motion to table because, um, I have several substantive concerns about the process and its lack of enumerated things, based on my experience, um, in trying to get up to speed in this process altogether. Because one of the things that I was required to do, um, in previous lives was to like, check out all the other budget processes and all those kinds of things. Because at the time, um, you could put the constant yield rate in later in Prince George's County, they're basically right at, they're both right at the fiscal deadline. Um, and so, uh, given that that's the case, routinizing these things, um, while it can be a little bit of a, a headache for staff in the near term in getting to the routinizations, I think it's best practices. And given the efforts that, uh, in particular, council member Gibson put in on this issue, um, and, uh, his work with council member Dibala on the issue, I think that the amendments, um, really actually, uh, address at least every single one of my concerns about the process. Um, and the aspects of learning, um, and education for the other members, I think, are well-served by at least knowing when they're going to get information. And so, uh, that is my opinion, uh, but I appreciate the opinion of council member Siemens.
Right, um, one thing that I do want to, um, say is that, um, we will be, and I hope to get some volunteers, um, in terms of a, um, a council subcommittee. And the idea is that the subcommittee would be charged with working with staff to identify, um, because this is pretty massive, right? Even, even though we are, have narrowed it down, there's a lot here. Um, and so the, the subcommittee will be responsible for working with staff to identify priority fiscal policy options for council consideration, um, working with me to identify agenda items and when they need to come before, um, before the, the larger body, um, and aid the, in the development of council, um, policy. So if there are certain things like resolutions and ordinances and things that need to accompany any of the modifications that, um, we would like to see happen here, um, the members of, of the, the council subcommittee would help with, with kind of establishing that. Um, so we didn't want to get into, because we typical process, the council member Dibala and I have talked about this, so typical, we don't typically put that kind of thing in a, in a resolution per se, um, but that is the goal, so that we don't have to bind this particular resolution to the kitchen sink. But it is something that we need to have, um, because it's clearly a priority amongst council members. And we have a very, um, clear designated group that are really working to try to, to think through and prioritize, because there is a lot here, um, in terms of where we should perhaps focus first. Um, so it would be an opportunity for, um, three council members, um, to participate in, so. Uh, so, so, um, instead of, we're doing a lot of pick-me-at-the-dais, um, I would encourage folks who are interested in being on that subcommittee to, to shoot me an email, um, so that we can, we can bring folks together and make that, um, decision again. Um, it would be three members of, of the council. Um, but again, this resolution is charged with at least providing a place to start, um, so that we can, um, start really needling away and working with staff to, to really dig a little deeper in terms of, um, what would need to happen. And that, that subcommittee could also offer, um, suggestions, um, and recommended approaches that the council should consider in terms of, um, ways to engage the community, um, around the budget and, and the process as well. Um, so it's a way for you all to, to kind of come together and, and chat with the, the staff to get a better understanding of, logistically, some of the, some of the challenges. better understanding of logistically some of the challenges, but also bring these discussions before council. Councilmember Gibson.
Yeah, I, first of all, I can't digest what you proposed. I would need to see it, frankly, to vote on it, and I would be willing to delay this vote until I had, until next week or something on that, I think. And I specifically had an amendment that was asking for a subcommittee to work on some of these issues. I think there may be, maybe more than one subcommittee here in terms of looking at a range of issues. So I guess I feel that there's value in us sort of being upfront and making it a proper resolution, and that we're telling the public that we are going to do it, and then we do our due diligence around that, whether it be, Councilmember Siemens suggested that it was perhaps too narrow, and I, so that, so I think that there is value in at least starting on some very specific pieces of the budget process, even if it isn't the whole ball of wax. One, the, some of the revenue side and the policy, and then some of the budget timeline and information that we have are two separate, are a part of the process. Anyhow, I guess I'd like to see what, I'd like to see what the mayor has proposed in paper for me to be able to vote on it, and I would like to revise my proposal after having discussion with Mr. Eubanks and others, and so that next week it would be, I think it would be a tighter amendment to the resolution. Anyhow, so I'd like, I'd like this to continue, but this postponed until next week.
Yep, so we have a...
I would like to modify my motion to make it for a date certain of next week, that we would table it until then.
Okay. Okay, so council, real quick, there's still a motion on the table to table this item. Now the motion is till next week, which I'm okay with. Councilmember Hanzak, you've been waiting patiently.
Okay, thank you. I just want to, I also want to echo my deep appreciation for Councilmember Dibala and Councilmember Gibson, as well as I understand Councilmember Small that worked quite extensively on these particular resolutions. I am deeply supportive of the intention behind all of them. And I just want to point out, because it relates sort of to what we're getting at here, one of the things that I heard the mayor did insert in one of your modifications was to say an initial review, which I had given too much thought to, but based actually on Acting City Man, Deputy City Manager Eubanks, your comment about what do you mean, I think it was last week, you said, what do you mean by a review? That could get very extensive, it could involve consultants, et cetera, and I definitely concur with your concerns. And so I was hopeful that somehow, as we consider tabling this resolution, that we are focused both on the specificity of what it is that we are setting out to do, and I want to point out that I think that we new members are, to some degree by necessity, leaning hard on our incumbents about what, and our Acting Deputy City Manager, on what is feasible based on any shortlist that we come up with, and I'd like to encourage us council members to lean very hard on the advice and counsel of our staff as to whether we are being overzealous in trying to take on such a big list, even if we say initial review, you know, how deep does that go, what are we trying to really set out to achieve? And I also want to hear your thoughts, please, on the proposed eight-month particular time horizon. I mean, I like it, but we will all be held to the bar of whether we have done good due diligence in an eight-month timeline to all the topics that have been listed. Again, I think all of us have to defer to staff and incumbents on what is truly feasible, because we haven't had time to get all that education that Councilmember Siemens was talking about, so thank you.
Councilmember Dibala, see your hand.
Oh, we can't hear you? Yes, thank you. I'd like to have the Acting City Manager comment also, but the eight months is, you know, if it's not done in eight months, it's not going to affect the next budget process. So that's how eight months came up as a number. Is this too ambitious? Maybe, quite possibly, but that's where eight months came from, just so everybody understands. And as I said at the outset, to remind people, this is not a comprehensive, not intended by me, as a comprehensive fix every budget process problem that we have. This was just a start. Look at some specific policies that kept coming up over and over during the budget discussions, and look at revenues, because you have expenses, you have revenues, you have reserves. So look at it that way. This does not talk about the budget schedule, the budget timeline, the budget online gaming, it doesn't talk about the budget community outreach. I had been assuming that someone else might propose something like that either in this resolution or as a separate resolution, since it's a very big topic. I just wanted to put all of that in context, and while we are on amendments, I have one small amendment, which I actually thought was already in here, seems like it's not, this notion of doing a quarterly, quarterly financial report in public. So in that first resolved, can we just put...
Present publicly, quarterly?
The second half of that to say, we'll publicly present council with quarterly fiscal report.
Can I call a question on this?
That was always my intent.
Yeah, so I want to make sure that we're keeping track of where we are in terms of our motions, right? So, not emotions, motions. So right now, we have a motion on the table to table this discussion, this vote for one week. So first, let me, I think it might be helpful...
Okay, I'll hold mine.
I think it might be helpful for us to go ahead and call a vote on that.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's do a quick hand vote. All those in favor of delaying this item until next week, raise your hand. All right, perfect. So, so we will put this item on the agenda for discussion next week. For folks who have amended items for the resolution, if you could please send them around, I can send my items around as well, so that we can make sure that we have a more finalized version of the resolution for discussion.
Can you give a timeframe for that? I mean, I'm still working on it a little bit, so do I need to have it by tomorrow?
It would be really great if we could get all of our edits in by Friday.
By Friday?
And then that way, because I recognize, I think we're all guilty of it, I know I am too, of working on stuff like Wednesday more...
Getting feedback from colleagues is...
Yeah, but we don't get enough time to get that feedback.
Is what I need.
Yeah, so if we could do it on, if everybody could have in their stuff on Friday, then that way we can have a little bit more time to chat before that Wednesday.
Yep.
Okay, all right, great. So with that, if folks are all right, we're going to move on to...
I would just like to thank everyone for their consideration, my suggestion.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Siemens, for making that motion. All right, so next, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion without discussion unless a council member requests removal of an item for individual discussion and consideration. So on our consent agenda for tonight is the single reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a contract for the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project, as well as the single reading ordinance approving grant awards. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Second.
Do you have a second? Okay, Councilmember Pulcher moved, Councilmember Gibson second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any oppose? Do you have any abstain? All right, so the consent agenda moves forward. All right, I'm going to do a quick time check, and I'm trying to be true to my promise to keep, give folks a little bit of a break. So if it's 9:07, if I can have people back in 10 minutes, and then we will begin our work session. Thank you. Thank you. I am unfortunately destroying things with the dyes trying to bang the gavel. Uh, so, thank you all for, for joining. Um, we are reconvening the Tacoma Park City Council meeting and we are now. That was a consent agenda, so when we voted, we voted on all of those components together.
I would get a vote for it.
All right. So we're gonna move on to the, uh, work session. Um, tonight, uh, we are joined by our lobbyists in Annapolis, Anne Sekat. Um, and we will be, um, have, receive a presentation on the twenty twenty-three legislative wrap-up and discussion of the twenty twenty-four legislative priorities.
Does this need, there it is, excellent. Um, good evening everyone, it's nice to see you in person after, uh, uh, my weekly reports that were not. So, um, it's, it's lovely to be here in the beautiful city of Tacoma Park. Uh, so I wanna run through some highlights, um, from the legislative session. Take any questions, of course, that you have about things. Um, and then shift into how we might be able to start planning for, um, priorities for next year. Which is amazing that it all just keeps rolling, right? So, um, I first, very high level, um, uh, in terms of how the session was. Um, it's always weird when you have a new governor come in and the session starts and then a week after session starts. Uh, there's a new governor and of course Governor Moore after inauguration, being inaugurated, named so many, uh, new secretaries, uh, and other, uh, people in his office. Um, and so it was a lot of new people. Um, and, um, uh, there was also some changes that happened because there were some legislators who left to become members of the cabinet or somewhere in the governor's office. And so vacancies in Annapolis mean one person moves, someone's gotta fill that seat, then there's another seat to get filled. And so, um, one of those moves, um, resulted in Delegate Janelle Wilkins being named Vice Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. So that was certainly very good for, um, one of our D twenty team members. Um, literally today, um, there were a new announcements about some additional changes going on in the House. Um, again, because there've been some other movements of people. Um, and David Moon, Delegate David Moon, who had been Vice Chair of the House Judiciary Committee, was named Majority Leader today. So, uh, he will not be Vice Chair of Judiciary. Um, I believe he's still gonna stay on Judiciary, um, but he plays, um, uh, you know, a higher leadership role, um, within the Democrats in leadership in the House of Delegates. So lots of exciting things going on, um, for District Twenty. Um, the Senate confirmed, I think it was literally, to say that again, nine hundred ninety-nine people, uh, to various boards and state agencies and commissions and things like that, it was very busy. Um, and then with the budget, so of course, again, the weird thing about a new governor coming in is that when he takes office, the governor that he has to introduce right away is mostly not his. It's mostly the previous administrations, mostly reflects the priorities of the previous administrations. So there are a lot of changes that happen to the budget. But in addition, prior to the end of twenty twenty-two, we had a very positive, bright and shiny outlook on the state's budget situation. Um, including, they were saying, oh, we won't have, we, you know, we have a big surplus, we're projecting big surplus next year, and we won't deal, have to deal with structural deficits, um, for at least three or four years. And then practically overnight that changed. And a big part of that actually was, um, how the state is going to recap, has recalculated poverty in schools. And so because they've changed how they do that, it significantly increased the number of children deemed to be living in poverty. And that then necessitates a larger chunk of money to go to public education to keep up with the Kerwin mandates and the disparity grants and things like that. Um, and then there was also, you know, bad overall, um, revenue estimates. Um, you know, with things nationally, with everything struggling with the end of the, the, you know, federal assistance from the pandemic. So, um, really, it was just very quickly, uh, the whole, everybody's attitude changed in, in Annapolis around, um, I think what were higher expectations because there was lots of money that was going to be able to be spent. And still a lot of money gets spent, but a lot less than, than folks had been anticipating. So, um, the major issues though that did, um, take, uh, front stage, um, a number of them were the governor's initiatives, um, speeding up the increase of the minimum wage, um, that it will now be, uh, uh, up to fifteen dollars, uh, an entire year early, so by January first of twenty-four. Um, there were bills around trying to help low-income families, um, including an expand, uh, changes to the earned income tax credit to help low-income earners. Um, school funding was a big deal, nine hundred million dollars, uh, put into education, um, uh, by the governor and the legislature in their budget negotiations. Mental health services, um, in general, but very specifically in schools, uh, was a big topic about how do we get more mental health services, mental health professionals, working with school-aged children. The cannabis legalization structure that has to be in place by July one, when cannabis becomes legal, uh, was a very large topic. Um, and we'll talk about, um, uh, a detail important to municipalities in another slide or two. Reproductive rights, transgender and immigrant health, uh, issues were, um, significant, um, uh, issues and, um, lots of bills passed and got signed by the governor related to these things. And then paid family leave, um, uh, the, when they passed it two years ago, last, last year, last year, when they passed it last year, um, there were a lot, uh, it was a, a skeleton and so a lot of the details needed to be put into it. And, um, that did happen this year. Um, and the biggest thing really that happened related to that is they pushed back implementation another year. Um, while the Department of Labor develops all kinds of regulations about how it's going to work and how local governments, um, can apply for exemption if, uh, there are local governments that already provide benefit packages that are equal to or greater than what's in, what's required or what would be, will be in, uh, a part of Maryland's, uh, paid leave law. The other big thing for Tacoma Park, um, was getting some funding to help with the library project. Um, we, we asked for, uh, you know, we, we were, it was suggested to us, go ahead and ask for, you know, everything you need. Um, but, uh, everybody was asking for a lot of capital dollars this year. And, uh, it was a big theme that, oh my God, I don't even remember now what the total was, but you know, out of the something million they had to give, the amount that was requested was ten times as much, so, um, uh, I, but, but Tacoma Park in, in large part because of, uh, the District Twenty team, um, did get a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars toward that, which is fantastic. Other successful legislation that Tacoma Park weighed in on and, uh, uh, were, most of which were on your priority list. Um, the Safe Roads Bill for pedestrian safety, um, passed. As we've talked, I talked about this during the updates. The legislation itself is pretty thin, um, uh, because the State Highway Administration, uh, promised in writing to do the bulk of what was in, uh, the bill. Um, and the legislators I've talked to, including the lead sponsor Delegate Lori Charcutian, are like really gonna hold their feet to the fire. Um, and so we've had some discussions as well, um, uh, with staff about, you know, how, how we might wanna be very active and engaging, um, to really see if there are changes happening within, uh, that state agency. I can tell you that my experience was pretty immediate after the inauguration. There were a lot of changes happening within state agencies, uh, in terms of, um, a lot more, I think, willingness and eagerness even to work more collaboratively, um, with stakeholders. So let's, but, we're not gonna take anything for granted, um, but we're gonna go in with some optimism, uh, with the State Highway Administration. Um, the bill that Delegate Charcutian's had in for a few years on energy performance targets for low-income housing finally passed. That one, if, actually, it did pass before and then got vetoed, so they passed it again, which was good. Um, Tacoma Park has weighed in on this, uh, packing materials bill. Um, the bill would have done a whole lot and what it ended up doing is being a needs assessment. So it's baby steps, um, but it is progress, um, and trying to quantify, um, some of the, um, factors that go into how to then put requirements or restrictions on producers. Um, Tacoma Park weighed in on unlawfully restrictive covenants, um, which is a bill that will give local governments the ability to proactively remove, um, illegal language from covenants. Um, on the cannabis reform, um, the big piece that it was important to municipalities had to do with funding. Um, and if you're interested, you know, offline, I can give you the, the history of how the issue evolved. But where it landed was, um, that, uh, municipalities will get a percentage of the s- sales tax revenue generated from any sale from a dispensary in the city boundaries. Um, and it's just, I just need to find the, the number, cuz I seem to have forgotten that. Fifty percent, that's it, that's right. So it, and honestly, it's just been a little while, but the numbers went back and forth. But it's that the, um, whatever the county receives in the sales tax revenue, half of that will come back to the municipality where the products were sold. Uh, and that was a, a big win because how things were initially proposed, it would have been a lot less. Um, and then finally, um, a bill that the governor signed into law yesterday, uh, Jalen's Law, uh, around child access prevention, something that the city has been supporting the last couple of years, uh, that, uh, lead sponsor was, uh, Senator Will Smith. Um, and that's going to, we hope, help, um, keep guns out of young people's hands. Some of the legislation that we need to revisit, um, includes just cause eviction legislation. There is, one of the changes that created the announcements of changes today is the Chair of the Environment and Transportation Committee that hears just cause and a number of tenant-related bills, um, was appointed at the very end of session to the Public Service Commission, Kumabharve. So he's no longer Chair. The new Chair that was named today is Delegate Mark Corman, who is a Montgomery County Delegate. Uh, he had been the Majority Leader, so then David Moon got that, that appointment. So, um, it is possible, I am not going to lay any money on odds, but it is, we, we definitely have a different, uh, opportunity in that committee uh, to potentially move that legislation next year. So, uh, we will be beginning to talk with, um, Delegate Janelle Wilkins about, um, how we might shape that strategy in early discussions with the new Chair. Rank choice voting. Um, legislators in Annapolis are not yet overwhelmingly comfortable with ranked choice voting. Um, and that impacted the city's bill related to, uh, the vendor and allowing, you know, to, to make it easier for the ballots, uh, to work where there is, um, uh, ranked choice voting. There's another bill to allow Montgomery County to do ranked choice voting. Um, there are, um, it, it was very clear to me with testimony, both within the city, the county delegation and then in the committees on the bill, that, um, there's just a lot of discomfort with ranked choice voting. And so we have a lot of education to do around the benefits of ranked choice voting. So, um, that one's going to be a work in progress. Um, and then, um, there was a late filed bill, um, that I think just because it was late, didn't get the attention it needed. Um, but a bill related to sprinklers named after Melanie Diaz, uh, for that fire at the end of the year. So, um, I think that will, will come back, um, next session. And that was, um, Will Smith. Uh, and I don't, I actually remember off the top of my head who the House sponsor was, but that was his bill. And then the Maryland Municipal League works on a ton of bills. Um, and some of which, uh, folks either during session or right after session. and some of which folks either during session or right after session asked me about had to do with the things here. Constant yield rate. There was a bill that passed related to that. It didn't change anything related to constant yield requirements. It, it just changed notice requirements. So when, right now, government, local governments, including municipalities, have to provide notice every time the constant, how, whatever the notice is, whether the tax rate increases or decreases, you have to send a notice. This bill now says only if there's an increase do you have to send a notice. So it's really to help, I think, ease a bit of the burden and cost related to that.
And one pause really quickly. We have a couple of council members that are remote. Councilmember Small is having difficulty getting onto the Zoom, so I just want to make the clerk aware. Thank you.
I learned this session that municipalities have, you know, a significant interest in forest conservation. And everybody does, but, you know, that MML really works on this to ensure that conservation happens in a sustainable way, both for the land, but also for the local governments. There was some attempt to try to reduce the distance that school speed zones can be set up, and that would have a direct impact on revenue for the municipalities or the county governments that have speed zones. So that was defeated, but I think that thing, that, that kind of proposal comes up every now and again. And then this is something I only learned about after session, that there were some bills that were intended to, that passed, help with some ability for municipal governments to try to address abandoned property in terms of being able to take ownership. So if folks need more information on that, we can make sure to get all that. So I guess, I don't know if we wanna, if we wanna just stop there for a minute for questions before moving on really to the next piece, which is working on the next priorities.
Yes, I think that would be good. Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, thank you. Great report and exciting news about David Moon. Question about the constant yield. So, so the, the changes that the city no longer needs to advertise the constant yield rate as part of its public notice for the budget and tax rate, but the state will still calculate it and send it out?
Right. The, the calculation doesn't change. It's just that it's only if the tax rate increases, you have to send out a notice. So if taxes are not being increased, or if they're being decreased, you don't have to send notice. That, I guess, becomes a happy surprise.
And by increase, you mean increase compared to constant yield, not the current tax rate?
In, increase in the rate, in the tax rate, right? So the, my understanding, you probably understand this better than I do, but it's that the rate has to create that, a steady stream. And so based on assessments, when assessments go down, the taxes would have to go up, right? If, if the assessments go up, the tax rate can either stay the same or go down. So, so it's, my understanding is it's that rate that is the notice. And so again, only if that goes up will you have to send notice.
Yeah, it might be helpful to, because I'm, I guess I'm now getting a little confused in terms of whether or not constant yield, the constant yield rate itself increased, or, and therefore there would have to be some notice, or if our tax rate will be above constant yield, do we need to notice? So i- if you have any, any language that you've seen, that would be really helpful to know, because in, in my mind, like, there's, there's a nuanced difference, right? Like if the constant yield rate for the prior year was point five-two, and then because of assessments and everything, the constant yield rate in this year is point five-four or something, then does that mean we have to report? Or is it the case that anytime, still, which I believe is the case now, if we are planning to propose a tax rate that is above the constant yield rate, we have to post? So I'm just trying to make sure that I understand that, that nuance.
Sounds like it's the latter.
Yeah.
Okay. I will get that confirmed. I'll reach out to the folks tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'm not an expert on that issue.
We're all learning on that issue. Because I think, I thought, I recall hearing at one point, they were gonna not post them at all, like they were doing away with it altogether. So it would be interesting to see what actually changed in that process, whether anything really changed at all.
And it, and it did change from, from when it, how it looked when it was introduced to, to how it passed. So that may also be where we have some clarification needed.
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember DeBala, did you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Gibson?
I, I just had, could you go speak a little bit more about the forest conservation? Is that something that passed? I wasn't sure.
It was something that passed. It was not something that the city weighed in on, and it was not something that I was directly involved with. But understanding from the Maryland Municipal League that they weighed in on a bill that there, there was, I know at least a big part of it had to do with the replacement ratio, the tree-for-tree replacement ratio, and how, I think, my, my memory is that, and it has to do with certain zones in, in, in any county, and that the ratio remained one-for-one in some of those zones, but then it might be different for some different zones. But I think that there had been a push to make it a larger ratio for every tree that would be removed for development. And I think that that remained at one-for-one.
I guess to get the specifics on that, that would be helpful.
Sure.
I'm just, we, we care about our trees, as you well know, and have, have a lot of effort in that direction. Thank you.
If, Councilmember Hunter?
Thank you so much, Ann. I just wanted to, one, one question and one sort of statement is, I, I, it is my understanding, and I'm sorry, I'm looking at the name of the bill and I don't have it in front of me, but that the bill that we had brought to your attention and the D20 attention, when we, we knew folks just started about being able to decouple the light childcare license facilities, facilities from land. I'm not, I'm not being articulate, I'm sorry. I was just trying to find the number there, so my mind is stuck. Anyway, I think you know what I'm talking about, that we had, I believe it passed. Is that, is that the final word? Are you familiar with what I'm talking about? It was, it was taking away, do you know what I'm talking about, or are you?
I, I remember the issue being raised back in December when we did that. I'm not sure I was aware there was an actual bill.
I, okay, I'm gonna go, I didn't have it in front of me just now. I thought it might be presented tonight, maybe verbally. And I, I'm sorry, I don't have it, but I, I thought it went forward, and I thought it was a bill, but maybe not. So I'll follow up on that with you.
Absolutely. I'm happy. We can, I can, we can do some digging around to, to see where it was. There, there are several advocacy groups that lead a lot of the childcare regulatory structures and all. And I'm sure we can easily find out what the bills were related to all of that.
Okay. And then the other issue was, do you, did, do you know what happened with the SB 229 about the noise monitoring technology that you and I had exchanged some emails about? Does that ring any bells?
I believe that did not pass.
It did not, no, nothing even remotely in that domain?
So actually, you're, you're, you're making me question myself, because I thought, okay, what it did is it got out of the Senate, but it didn't, so it did get voted on in the Senate. It did not move out of the House. So that most certainly is another bill that we could be looking at. I think the issue becomes very much around, I think part of it is about the measurement. I remember there being a lot of discussion during session about how do you know when it's this or that? And then the, the issue of enforcement, and who's going to get slapped with this fine, you know, in what circumstances? And I think there's just a lot of concern about, would it be, would the enforcement be kind of uniform, or would it be?
Okay.
Not, not. So, so, but obviously, it has some momentum in that it, it got out of the Senate. So that may very well be something to be looking at for next, next year.
Okay, thanks. And I, I have not had the chance to update some of my colleagues on our dialogues around that. It was brought to my attention by some folks living in the northern part of our ward, where there's a lot more noise, and we were just kind of following what was happening. Thanks.
So I just want to thank you, Ann, for all of your hard work during this session. There was a lot of moving pieces and a lot of things that were happening. And I know we're getting ready to start talking about future priorities. And there's so much good news in terms of our District Twenty delegation with David and Janelle. I, I'm very hopeful, particularly as it relates to some of our affordable housing-related efforts, that this may actually be the legislative year to get some of that stuff through. So it would be really helpful to, to, to start having some conversations around our priorities. I think the, the MML priorities made sense. I'm not quite sure, you know, they, they kind of appear to be some things that I'm not quite sure where we would go from here, so to speak. So it might be helpful if you are gathering any intel from an MML perspective, because like the, the school zone shortening, I know that there's definitely been other bills that have passed around lowering the speed limit. So it would be, you know, how do we want to, knowing where Safe Roads landed, and do we want to hold SHA to their word? Or, you know, as we're going forward, do we want to maybe tweak things a little bit in terms of like what we want to propose from, from an SHA perspective? So I do think that it's going to be a really interesting time with so much transition, and it may actually bode well for us. Like we may actually get just cause through, possibly. So it, exactly. But it, it, it will be a really interesting time. So I just want to thank you so much for all of your work during this session. And as we start to transition into what's next, it's, it's, it's gonna be a fun, a fun ride, I think.
And I agree. So I, oh, I, I found, I just wanted to share, I found it. I'm sorry, I was trying to madly search for it. It's House Bill 525, and it did pass, according to the knowledge that I have, which is very exciting. The one related to childcare. So, thank you.
Yes.
That's all I have to say. I'm assuming that you may have played a role in that, but I know some of our D20 delegates did, so thank you.
Outdoor preschool licensed pilot program, right, to, to, to allow for innovative spaces to, to, to be, to be able to qualify. So looking at the, the priorities that you all voted on a month ago, a couple of months ago, I was reading through them, and I, and I put on here the six, the five priority areas that you have. And then in the document that, that you all voted on, you, you have a, a list of some strategies underneath each of the main categories. And so I pulled from those lists the things that, to me, jump out as state-level issues. So it's, there are certainly a lot of things in there, and some may still be also, these were the things, again, that just sort of jumped out to me as maybe a place to start. So in advancing a community of belonging, there was very specifically an issue-related statement around supporting and protecting immigrants. And that's going to continue to happen. There's going to be a continual push to expand healthcare access for immigrants. There were a couple of things that, that did pass this year that were very helpful. So these, these things are just continuing to, to, to happen. And then just FYI, and I'm only mentioning it because I literally today heard it on the radio, that beginning July one, a bill that passed in 2022 will be taking effect, allowing people, pregnant people, regardless of immigration status, to be, who qualify for Medicaid, to get services prenatal and for a period after the child's born. So that's huge, really gonna be huge in immigrant communities. So anyway, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of advocacy in this space. For fiscal sustainability, government, fiscally sustainable government, additional revenue sources, and that's just a perennial. And, you know, I think that's one of the things MML continues to try to, to work on and prioritize when there are opportunities, like with the cannabis reform bill. But I think, you know, if, if there are ways we can be creative and think of other kinds of opportunities, I'm sure MML, other municipalities would love for some brainstorming on that. Certainly for environmental, environmentally sustainable communities, there is, I, I don't know that we will ever not have some substantial bills related to this. So, you know, there, we will just continue to, to raise those as they get introduced. And if there are bills from this last session that folks really, really liked, you know, we can be spending some time during the interim working with the sponsors or the other advocates on figuring out how to improve it so that it comes back and, and has a better chance. There wasn't anything very specific under engaged, responsive, service-oriented government that feels very local and in-house. But if there are things that you find that would be helpful, some kind of state policy change to help facilitate any of the local government functioning, that should be on the list. And then under community development for an improved and equitable quality of life, affordable housing and issues around common ownership communities was there. And there are certainly lots of opportunities in the state legislature to impact those issues. And then the transportation and, both in terms of pedestrian safety, but then the other transportation projects. Those are things that we should be definitely talking to folks about. I will again mention Delegate Mark Corman, the brand-new Chair of the Environment and Transportation Committee. And he has for several years headed up the Transportation Subcommittee of the Appropriations Committee. So he, he was the king on the House side on the transportation budget. So I think he would be, you know, somebody very key on the legis, on the policy side. And, you know, maybe someone that the city wants to talk to about, you know, developing a relationship and, and talking about some of the shared goals. And then just quickly, the next steps. We have this process that we go through every year around the Maryland Municipal League's Legislative Action Requests. And so we're starting some of that discussion today. You were provided materials from Jesse Carpenter about the, the last few years' worth of LARs, as they are called. So we need to have them into MML by the end of June. So before that time, we will need to officially, you all, will need to officially vote on those priorities. And then the other things going on outside of that is we had a discussion, I had a discussion with staff about doing some of this engagement with new state agency personnel, and, you know, be able to, to be working with them, whether it's on housing issues or transportation issues or pedestrian safety issues. And then, of course, down the road, we'll do our meeting with the D20 team later in the year. But certainly, we, we should be engaging with them throughout the interim about what some of their priorities are and what some of our priorities are. And then we start it all again January 10th. So with that, it's really looking at your existing priorities, as you've stated them, and thinking about what are the items that are of common, you know, there's, is or, or should be common concern with other municipalities, and makes it something that the City of Tacoma Park wants to propose that MML, as an official statewide body, supports. And I don't know if we want to spend time actually reviewing the And I don't know if we want to spend time actually reviewing the past LARs or just kind of understanding that things like the, uh, uh, Local Revenue Authority is something that's on that list every year. Um, some of the transportation, housing issues are really there every year. The, the MML piece again, you have decided your priorities. It's figuring out, are there a few discrete ones that we can push with MML that would really bolster our chances of getting something through when we are, are able to identify and, and really coordinate with other municipalities throughout the state?
Councilmember Dobala, I see your, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you. Um, I probably not have a long discussion about this tonight. Um, but given that, that at least the mayor is going to the MML County Chapter Meeting tomorrow, I would like to mention that, um, the question of whether it's possible to have legislation at the state level to change some of the property tax credit eligibilities. Um, so there, there, some of them are fixed, don't increase over time, even though inflation has increased dramatically recently. And the question is whether there is any, um, what the, how, how we might do that and, and whether there's an appetite for pursuing that. Um, there is, uh, I've been in touch with State Delegate Chakuti- Chakutian, as Anne knows. Um, and there is movement to have a sit down to talk about this, uh, in the next couple of weeks. Um, and her office, Delegate Chakutian's office is doing some research on what would have to happen and whether there have bills been introduced before, et cetera. But it might be something to mention at the County Chapter Meeting, um, tomorrow just to see whether anybody else is interested. That's it. Thank you.
No, happy to do that. And I think, um, Councilmember Dobala, uh, you know, I was kind of thinking along the same lines, not from the perspective of the credit, but from the perspective of, um, you know, the state is, has identified that because of the change in the definition of poverty, that there are more youth that are falling within these, these boundaries. And I know one of the things that was discussed, at least with the county executive, um, is the greater need for resources, for recreational services for youth and communities. So, um, there is definitely a desire for there to be, um, more resources towards, um, schools, rightfully so. Um, but I think one of the main reasons why there was such a push for, um, a lot of capital, um, and at least from the MML perspective during our discussions, it was to get the resources necessary to do things like building rec centers and building infrastructure, um, to, to provide youth in particular, um, places to be because of, of right now, um, one of the major issues that are happening right now is in terms of youth-led, um, crimes, I think, just kids being kids and coming out of the pandemic. Um, so I think that may be something else in addition to credits or thinking about, hey, you've changed the definition of poverty. And yes, the kids are one piece, but there's also other individuals as well. And so what are we doing, especially in light of the fact that, uh, a lot of our COVID dollars are expiring? And we know that there's a lot of programs that were created using those COVID dollars and those are gaps that will need to be filled. So I think just trying to figure out, um, with some of our MML partners, what are some of those specific asks that we want to try to hang our hats on to try to tackle some of those issues, um, may be, may be a, a good way to, to formulate the, the ask.
And I, and I, I would imagine MML, like a lot of organizations, are, um, going to be, just because everybody's new at the administration level, um, uh, hopefully very much engaging more with folks early and, you know, honestly see what things can be agreed upon. Can people be working on collaboratively during the interim? Um, and maybe we don't need to be doing some bill, you know, some number of bills, uh, during, during session because maybe there can be a bit more collaboration before session. So I'm sure MML is, uh, their staff is, is looking at that as well. That seems to fit, I think, the governor's priorities.
Yeah, yeah. It's, I think the tricky thing when you're talking about those kinds of topics is what is the MML specific ask that we want to push for besides more money for good stuff?
Right, right.
Um, and so I think that that's the, that's the angle. I, I, I appreciate Councilmember Dobala's ask for, well, can we, at a state level, can we modify, um, some of the income requirements for some, a number of these credits, especially as we have aging populations? Um, from a perspective of, um, affordable housing, of course. Affordable housing has always been something on our list. Um, but what are some other things that we may want to consider, particularly as it relates to, to youth and youth programming? Is it more grant funds that would be available? More capital dollars that would be available to municipalities? That would enable us to, to serve that population better? Um, I, I think that that's, uh, an angle that we may want to consider as well. And then also the, the SHA piece. I am so torn on SHA. It's like, I want to believe that the tides have changed, but I don't know. So I don't know to, to what extent we, we, MML, we want to keep making that push, um, in terms of state highway as it pertains to maintenance, as it pertains to, you know, maintaining their sidewalks, you know? We take some budget hits because we're improving sidewalks that are actually technically owned by state highway. Um, so what are some things that we may want to consider in addition to things related to speed? But from an infrastructure perspective that may have some impacts to our bottom line financially, maybe, maybe something worth considering as well? Okay. Well, um, as, as Anne mentioned, we have a quick turnaround on this, technically speaking. About a month. Um, so, um, in terms of, uh, next steps, I'll be sending out some, some guidance to folks. Um, I want to encourage people to take a look at the materials that Jesse, um, has shared. Um, if you have any questions, um, definitely run them through Mr. Eubanks and we can consolidate them and get them to, to Anne so that she can provide responses. Um, and particularly if you have any ideas around things that we may want to consider, um, including on our shortlist as a council, um, for legislative priorities, that would be helpful as well. Um, and so with that, I'm being mindful of the time, given that it's 10 o'clock and I see no more lights. Uh, but thank you so much, Anne, and I look forward to working with you as we start working on these legislative priorities.
Thank you very much. It'll be fun to be able to spend the whole interim working with you all.
Yes, awesome.
Thanks.
Excellent. So we're going to move on to our last work session item. And that is the procurement item, rental housing licensing and rent reporting software. And I'll turn things over to Mr. Eubanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a brief introduction. Today we have, um, Devin McNally, our Housing, uh, Manager, presenting, uh, what I'll call an opportunity to, um, substantially upgrade one of our core functions, one of HCD's core functions, um, which is to oversee our rental licensing program. Um, Devin will give you some additional detail about kind of the, the way in which our, our, our existing software and process works. Um, but it's, um, it's a welcome change to, uh, uh, an antiquated process. So that said, I will turn it over to Devin McNally for the presentation.
Thanks, David. And, uh, I'll be mindful of time, knowing that I'm the last person standing between you and going home. So Devin McNally with the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, so talking a little bit about, uh, procurement process that we're bringing forward for rental licensing and rent reporting software. So a little bit of background, um, why we have a platform like this. Um, so we, uh, are required under the city code to issue rental licenses, uh, to any property that rents, uh, out to someone. Um, and so that covers about 550 properties throughout the city. Uh, and they are required to either annually or biannually renew that license. Um, and that depends on the results of, uh, inspections. Um, and so as part of this renewal, or if they're applying for a new license, they're required to provide us, uh, with a number of pieces of information and documentation, uh, including information about the properties, such as the number of units, contact information for the property owner, as well as the property manager, if they do have one. They are required to provide us with their LED certification, uh, that's part of the state requirement for any rental property. Uh, they're also required to provide us with a certificate that they completed our landlord training course. Um, we also have the county then go out and inspect. That's with our contract with the Department of Housing and Community Affairs. And then they also pay our rental licensing fee. Um, in addition to that, uh, any of our rent stabilized property, that's about 280 properties, uh, covering about 1,600 units, um, they have to submit annual rent reports to the city. So that is based on, you know, what the current rent they offer, um, some information about how they charge utility fees and other optional fees. So tracking all of this, um, handling new applications, storing those documents, um, requires a software to manage that process. Um, and so our current software, uh, is based more around a database. It does have some public facing components, but mostly it would function as something where you input data into it. Um, so a lot of the work for new applications, any changes to a current license or ending a existing license has to be done through paper forms currently and requires coordination by staff through email, uh, to our finance department, to the county and their Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Um, so tracking this all is, uh, a time consuming process. Um, we also must manually upload our compliance documents, so all those certifications. We are the ones that have to receive the document and then upload it into, uh, our database. Um, and this just limits our ability to effectively track and then report out, um, on our licensing and rent reporting. Um, additionally, our current system doesn't, uh, adhere to kind of the best practices regarding IT security. Um, so we would also like to get something that has the most, uh, safe, uh, IT that we can so that it, our systems are protected. Um, and then cost is another factor as well. So currently the software, uh, annual budget is $13,000. This includes, uh, the maintenance of the system, but then any work order changes. Uh, we occasionally will request things of the contractor and that costs time and then we pay them a, a retainer as well. Uh, and then there's additionally a $36,000 consulting contract, which is, uh, outside staff helping us with the rent reporting software. Um, so the total budgeted cost for the program manually, uh, is $49,000. So I'll jump into the benefits, uh, we had hoped to kind of, uh, we hope to get from a new software. Um, the first off is staff time saving, savings. Uh, this is a core function, so it has to get done. Um, and so by saving staff time, we can move on to other programs related to affordable housing, related to landlord tenant engagement. Um, and additionally, we can provide a streamlined review intake process that'll allow us to more effectively, um, track and administer this program. Um, the other part of it is improved customer service. Uh, one of the things that our landlords talk about is, I'd like to know the status of my application. I'd like to be able to go in and get my license. So the idea being that this would be a 24/7 customer facing portal where they could pull that license at any time and they could also see where in the process it is. Um, additionally, it would make compliance easier. We could tell, hey, your license has expired very quickly. Get out to them and say, look, you need to get back into compliance. Um, and then there are cost savings as well. Uh, we're hoping to save about $10,000 to $15,000 annually. So the process so far, we released a request for proposals in March. Uh, it closed mid-April. We had four responses. Uh, those responses were evaluated by a review panel consisting of staff from, uh, HCD and then our IT department. Uh, the evaluation criteria looked at the ability to meet our technical requirements, including workflow management, data storage, um, and reporting abilities. Uh, we also looked at the cost of the system as well as prior experience and the qualifications of the firm. Uh, two of the firms were pretty close, uh, in the way that they were scored. Uh, so we invited them in to demonstrate their product and present to the review team. So we have a preferred, uh, vendor, uh, called GovOS, uh, and we're in the process of drafting, uh, a contract. So some of the details around that, um, so the contract would be a three-year contract starting in FY '24 and running through FY '26. Um, it would be overall roughly $94,000 over those three years, including an implementation fee of $15,000. There is the potential for changes to that, um, as they integrate with other city systems. Um, but then the first year annual fee would be a little under $25,000 with 5% uh, annual escalations after that. Um, we have budgeted for this, um, both HCD and IT in our FY '23 budget and then in our FY '24 ask, uh, budgeted for this, uh, implementation of a new software. Um, and so we would not require any budget amendments. So the next steps, uh, next week on the 24th, we'll be bringing forward, uh, an ordinance that's attached to the staff memo, uh, that would authorize staff to enter into a contract with that preferred vendor. Um, we'll then work with the city attorney and the vendor themselves to draft and execute that contract, uh, with an anticipated rollout in winter of 2023. So with that, I'll, uh, turn it over for any questions.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, uh, this, this sounds like, uh, the, a good way to, to move forward for, for a lot of reasons that you mentioned. And you mentioned, um, annual savings of about $10,000 to $15,000 per year. Is that, um, based on the contract or, or our, uh, staff time that?
So that would be based on the contract, the difference between?
So there should be some savings in additional in terms of staff time? The staff would be engaged? Is that, is that fair to say or not?
Yeah, so, so I, there would be savings to staff time, correct?
But that's not been calculated in this, in this 10 to 15?
Correct.
Okay, so there's even more. Good, thank you.
So I just want to say thank you so much, Devin. I think this is, this is great. Um, one question I have, and, and I know that, um, there's been a couple of instances where there are some, um, I guess, challenges that individuals may have when they want to take their properties off of the rental licensing, off the rolls, right? Will this system help to address those components as well? So for you to be able to update your license and submit that information, but also if you no longer want to be a, a landlord and want to remove yourself from the roles, this system would allow, it's more user friendly and would allow someone to do that through that, through that process as well?
Correct. So one of the specifications we required in the request for proposals was the ability to manage the license online. So the idea being in, most of the respondents, uh, have portals set up where they can manage the license online. So requests to discontinue, uh, can be done just straight from the user portal side of it. And then it would come to staff.
And that would be all of the necessary forms that they would need to complete on our end as well? So they would basically submit their information, fill out whatever they need to fill out, and then that would somewhat be in an automatic way? Will the, does the system then route like the necessary approvals and things between, amongst staff so that there would be a way to ensure that once someone submits their information, it gets routed for the appropriate person in HCD to sign, to review and sign off? Or is that something that the contractor does as well?
So, no. So the way the systems would be set up is that the workflow process would be only for HCD staff. So we wouldn't have a contractor involved in reviewing the material. So we wouldn't have a contractor involved in reviewing the materials. The contractor would set up the workflow system such that a notification would come into our staff to take a look at it, approve it, send it back for comments, deny it, depending on what they receive, and then move it forward. So the idea, and then the other piece of it would be is that we would be able to see where in process these applications are. So for example, if something, a application came in and for one reason or another sat for a little bit, we would be able to see, hey, this application has been sitting, what's going on with it? Let's get it moving through the process.
And so on the backend, does that also mean that eventually you may actually have, to Councilmember Gibson's point, like time on task, sending back, managing your minutes? I don't, I'm not for that. As a federal worker myself, the idea of that just gives me pain. But the, but systems like this that kind of automate certain aspects of your workflow do kind of give you a window into how many folks have submitted stuff, how many days it's taken to approve on average, right? On average, how many days does it take to approve on average? So it may not be able to tell you specifically. Devin spent 48 hours total dealing with this particular issue, but it could say the average turnaround for someone who's requesting a new rental license is about 14 days, right? Okay. And that, that would be the type of information that we would be able to see from the, yeah, okay. Okay, great. Awesome. Well, I'm excited about this because I know that it will make, it will make life easier for a number of you all. Possibly me too. All right. No more comments, questions? Okay, great. So we will, this will come back before council next week for a vote. And I thank you so much for sticking with us tonight and presenting. All right, have a good night. All right, so that concludes the meeting for this evening. Would someone like to move that we adjourn? I would like to move that we adjourn. Oh, Councilmember Fulter beat me to a second. All right. Thank you all so much. Have a great night.